Good evening. We'll go ahead and call to order the committee of the whole meeting for January 17th, 2013. And if we could have roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Senneca.
Here.
The clerks here, trustee Emery.
Here.
Trustee Fleming.
Here.
Trustee Clevenow.
Here.
Trustee Nero.
Here.
Trustee Scott is absent tonight. Manager Cyril.
Here.
And our lovely attorney Perez.
Here.
Fire chief Wise.
Here.
Deputy police chief Gunther.
Here.
Police chief Mulhern.
Here.
Acting fire prevention director Kaufman.
Here.
Public works director May.
Here.
Acting community development director Malik.
Here.
Finance director Parker.
Here.
Human resource director Casey.
Yes.
Is that it?
I think so.
Do you stand for the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God.
Thank you. Tonight, under open forum, we have two, both for the same topic. We have Bill Baum, who will be speaking tonight about the multifamily licensing ordinance. We do ask respectfully that you limit your comments to about three minutes.
Sure.
And that tonight is a very long agenda.
Sure. Well, this shouldn't take long. Good evening. My name is Bill Baum, and I live at 272 Oxford Avenue in Vernon Hills. And I own the properties at 240 and 300 West Quincy. And the matter tonight is concerning the multifamily licensing ordinance. And I have these invoices that have been issued by the village of Westmont. And it's common knowledge that the village has stopped taking these applications and payment of the invoices prior to January 1st, 2013. On the face of the invoices, it says that any renewals received or postmarked after December 31st, 2012 are subject to penalties in accordance with the ordinance, 09115. And the penalties being that 20 percent addition to the invoice for every month thereafter that the ordinance goes into effect. But since the ordinance did not go into effect on January 1st, 2013, I'll need to take with me tonight a statement from the village to attach to the invoices so that they're reconciled. And the statement should say that the ordinance did not go into effect January 1st, and that the invoices are null and void. And so that's why I'm here tonight, for that statement.
Is there anything else? Is there anything else, Mr. Baum?
No, I need to take that with me tonight.
Okay, thank you.
It's a common practice in other towns that actually notices should have been issued. I've got a copy, in fact, of a sample notice by the city of Waukegan when they ceased their ordinance for review because of constitutional issues.
Thank you.
My suggestion, Mr. Baum, would be to give that to our acting community development director. Obviously, at a meeting like tonight, a public meeting, we're not in a position to issue any kind of statements. Well, I need the statement tonight. I understand you're asking for that. And the reason why is because, so that I can present it tomorrow or anytime forward. What I'd like to suggest is if you get in touch with her, and we can be back in touch with you tomorrow and try to respond to your questions. No, I need a statement tonight. And the reason for it is because on the face of this invoice, it states that...
Mr. Baum, I apologize for interrupting, but let me just say, on a Thursday night at our committee of the whole meeting, we don't take any formal action. So really, your best course of... But your best course of action is to give that to the...
No, this is a statement that I have a legal right to request. I have a legal right. This is a financial matter, and it's a legal matter. You're asking for... This is something that I have a right to request.
Absolutely. And that request can be directed to our acting community development director. Thank you.
And on the face of these invoices, these invoices are delinquent.
Well, obviously, we know you're here, and we will take care of that if you'll address it with the...
I don't think you quite understand. I need to take that statement with me tonight. And I have a legal right to that. And I have a paper document. This is a public meeting. We're not prepared to be able to address your question. I'm suggesting that we can be in touch with you tomorrow. The village did not issue us a notice. And we can try to get this issue resolved for you. But as was said by Mayor Pro Tem, we have a very long agenda tonight. This is not... Geez, I'm really sorry. And it's a very simple request.
You're asking for a statement that we have told you, Mr. Baum, all of that is done during business hours. It's 7:00 at a committee of the whole meeting. We don't conduct village business, per se, as our staff does at a committee of the whole meeting. So we've told you, Ms. Malik will be happy to work with you on that. It isn't going to happen tonight.
Thank you very much for coming in.
You know, you're demanding money from me, for payment on demand. That's what an invoice is.
Mr. Baum, I'm sorry, but the three minutes is up, and we will work with you through Shannon Malik, as trustee Emery stated. And we will have our next open forum, which is Grace Snyder Kubica.
My name is Grace Snyder Kubica.
Oh, Kubica, I'm sorry.
And I am a landlord, a property owner, and I'm speaking on the multifamily ordinance, which you have suspended. And as Mr. Baum said, we have not received any notice that you have rescinded the order. It should have been because you lost home rule. It's no longer in effect. Am I to understand, Ms. Emery, that we can get a statement from Shannon Malik tomorrow morning?
What I'm saying is, we can respond tomorrow. I'm not clear on what it is he's looking for. We have talked about at previous meetings that we've hired a separate legal counsel to get an opinion on things such as this program. We have, in fact, actually received that opinion. It just came today.
Mr. Cyril, why haven't you received that opinion?
Pardon?
You received it.
I said, today, we just, in fact, received that opinion.
Just today?
Yes.
Well, then by tomorrow?
No. What's going to have to happen is that opinion's going to have to be reviewed by the board. I would say within the next week or two, we will have a statement, and we'll be able to answer your questions appropriately.
Well, meantime, can you send out a letter to all the landlords, saying that, yes, it's been suspended, and we're not going to be charging UAF fee?
I believe we issued press releases.
We did that. I never got one. I'm a landlord. It was a press release.
It was a press release, ma'am.
And we made it...
And we spoke about it publicly in a meeting.
The announcement publicly, yes.
And it was done in a public venue, that we've suspended the program. Anything dealing with that program at this point in time has ceased. If you have received this in the mail, there is nothing to be done with at this point in time. If you have not paid anything, do not pay anything. If you have, it will be held until a decision is made based on council's suggestions. So as far as any delinquencies or anything like that goes on any of this stuff, the program has been suspended. And it was put in the public venue that way.
Well, then somehow I missed it. And I generally read the paper pretty well.
We talked about it about four times here.
We were in attendance the night that we did suspend it, ma'am.
I think you were actually at the...
Talk about it. You had a board meeting.
Yes, but it still should have gone out to all the landlords specifically. Because your applications...
Immediately.
Your applications go out to the landlord specifically. The landlord should have been specifically notified. It would have been the proper courteous thing to do.
Well, thank you very much for your comments this evening. We appreciate them.
Thank you. I will be contacting you very soon.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Okay, moving on to reports. The January 17th, 2013 Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau awards that were going to be granted this evening for the business decorations will be delayed until probably the next set of meetings or the meetings in February, the first set in February. On Monday, we will have employee service awards. We will be honoring all of our employees, our committee members, board members, for length of service with the community, with the village. So that'll be happening on Monday. And clerk?
I just want to congratulate the Westmont Rotary Club on a very successful basketball tournament over the weekend. They drew huge crowds. I could not believe how packed that gym was for the championship games on Saturday night. You couldn't have crowbarred somebody else in there. And it was so well attended, and the kids had fun. Both Jefferson won, both the girls and boys.
The girls won in the last two seconds?
The girls won in the last two seconds, yes. But it was a fun tournament. I enjoyed it very much.
Anything else?
Nope.
Emery?
I have no report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Manager?
Just three items. I'd like to request an executive session on personnel, as well as an executive session to discuss filling a public office vacancy. And the other item I have is, I'd like to ask Larry McIntyre to come to the front. We have a presentation. I'm assuming, Larry, you'll start off the presentation regarding the Westmont Special Events, 2013 events activities.
Sure. Thank you. As you may be aware, WSCC has been having numerous meetings with community stakeholders regarding 2013 community events. And tonight, we're going to do an initial presentation rather than asking for, making official requests for you to approve. Our thought is to go ahead and do an initial presentation, both to the village board, as well as the public at large. We'd like to get a little bit more feedback, maybe for a period of a couple of weeks, and then we'll be back before the board, maybe within the next 30 days, with the official request. So who's going first? So Robin Gardner is vice president of administration, and she's going to be talking about a community bulletin board project.
Hi. Westmont Special Events wants to get the community together, the businesses together, organizations, and get a bulletin board. So we want to promote community events, promote community meetings, announcements of public happenings, emergency and safety messages on it, and of course, time and date. We want to follow the same guidelines as Uncle Bubbs, text only, possibly six or more rotating messages, no religious, political, or pure commercial messages, and no non-Westmont messages. We want to reach out to the organizations in Westmont and establish in a community-focused organization hosting public events in Westmont. We want to invite various public agencies, community groups, and the village to be active project participants via support, development, solicitation of funds, and follow-through to completion. Our proposed location is at the Westmont Center. Of course, no political messages. We want it to be 96 inches wide, 36 inches tall, six inches in depth. It's going to fit with the existing sign at Westmont Center right now. And the estimated cost is $15,000 to $20,000. This is a sign that's at Mount Prospect. They have it written like there's an island in the middle of their intersection. And they've got it so traffic both ways can see it.
And it's right next to their commuter train station there.
And that's it. We're going to really try to get community organizations to help us out with this, you know, and talk to them and see what we can do.
Great.
So we are looking for feedback from, of course, elected officials, and then, of course, village staff. I know Director May has voiced his thoughts about a good location in regards to safety, and he thinks possibly right there in front of Westmont Center might provide some distraction at a point where you don't want that with the traffic. Steve, did you want to mention that for a second?
Yeah, I guess there's certainly a lot that goes into that. And then I'll just quickly summarize it, that there was a lot of good reason that we took down the community event board that was right there at that intersection. And it's all about things that take attention away from motorists crossing the railroad tracks. So that was the purpose. And I would just want to be more involved with picking a permanent location for this. If we can work together with you.
Absolutely. And just to mention a couple of other thoughts. One thought was maybe the corner near the commuter parking lot on Cass and Burlington, possibly that corner where we currently put a lot of banners and things. That might be a location. Also, we have a monument sign that's adjacent to the fountain, and possibly it could fit there as well. So anyway, any thoughts that either you or the community has? We're looking forward to your feedback. And now introduce Emily Banza, who's our other vice president in charge of communications. And she'll be talking about some of our new plans for 2013.
Good evening, everyone. Just a short recap of 2012. For our Taste, our biggest one, we had three days of music, lots of food, crafts vendors. We had our Fresh Marketplace, which was new this year. We started off with 15-plus vendors. We did do a lot of publicity. However, we were challenged by it being our first year and also bad weather. We do believe that there is great potential, so we are seeking opportunities for this year as well. For our cruiser nights, we had our typical, our squad car night and fire truck night. We also did some new activities, including RC cars, which was a big hit. And finally, our new event this year was our Rock and Roll Road Rally, which some of you guys participated know how much fun it was. We had 15 destinations, nine teams. The feedback that we received was that it was a really great event, and it was enjoyed by all. For the Taste of Westmont this year, the dates are July 11th through the 14th. Some of our new ideas that we received from the community for this year, possibly having a country night on Friday, having an open craft area, and possibly a car show, and maybe including a market night on Thursday evening with the Kids of Palooza. Thursdays in Westmont, this is one of our new ideas, which is a new layout for Thursday's events. So for the cruiser nights and the Fresh Marketplace. On our next slide, we have actually a map. The pink area, it's kind of hard to see, that is where we would do classic car parking. This is also if we would close off the street. The yellow area would be for a live band. The blue area would be for kid stuff, including activities. And then the green area would be for our Fresh Marketplace. This is between... Sorry. Yeah, it's between Burlington and Irving is where we are looking to have the event. We're trying to... A new layout that was brought up by different organizations, but also community members. So this year, we're going to look into having reserved classic car parking, doing our weekly themes and awards, also having more of the RC car demonstrations, specialty car visits, and of course, our live music. Our Fresh Marketplace, we're looking to have 20 to 30 vendors this year, have more activities. And also this year, we are thinking of having some cooking demos as well. As everyone knows, we wouldn't be able to do any of these events without your support and all of our, you know, wonderful volunteers as well.
And just to recap, I mean, the biggest part of this presentation is this new layout. And we've had meetings, of course, where the village board came and participated in a couple of meetings, and DWBA. And we also went to their January meeting to revisit this conversation. And I would say that we've received very positive support from the great majority of people who have partaken in these conversations. But of course, this is a big change. And so with something like this, there'll be people who potentially have concerns. And that's the reason we're here tonight, is to kind of get this out here in a very public way and get feedback, hopefully in the next few weeks, not only from village board, but also from staff and then the public, and of course, the business community. For something like this to be successful the way we all want it to be, it's going to be a team effort, and everyone needs to embrace it and hopefully roll up their sleeves and be part of its success. So any questions at this time?
No.
If not, the final person to introduce is Linda Sabatka. And...
Westmont has started a tradition of honoring businesses who have supported community events. The first three businesses we will be honoring tonight, not in any particular order, are Expression Dance Studio, Uncle Bubbs Barbecue, and Uncle John's Music. If they would please come up, we'd like to present this to them at the same time.
We'll get a picture of everybody, if that's all right. WSCC members want to come on up for this as well?
And all the WSCC members.
Yep. Can we come up? No. I guess it's you, Linda. A lot of camera shy people.
They're coming. They're coming.
All right, ready? I'm going to take one right here. Do one more? Thank you.
Can I get the three?
Oh, how beautiful.
I'm just going to say a few words about each of you real quick. Expression Dance Studio, for many years, has been a sponsor of the Taste, as well as they take a booth out every year. And Amber has said that she's received a lot of attention at these events and has resulted in a lot of business. And so thank you very much for your sponsorship. Uncle Bubbs, every year, is a big sponsor of the event and sponsors our VIP backstage area. And that's wonderful. We appreciate that, as well as being one of our great vendors every year. Uncle John's Music is a sponsor of our kids' tent every year. And so thank you very much for that. Provides the sound for four days in a row. So definitely appreciate.
Thank you. So we had two uncles. I guess we might have to start calling you Aunt Amber. Keep it, you know, to keep with the theme there. Anything else? Manager Cyril, anything else?
No.
Okay, thank you. Trustees, the only thing I have tonight is, I attended the chamber membership luncheon yesterday. It was a wonderful, wonderful event, attended by many new members and members that have been with the chamber a number of years. And I'm always just so proud and impressed with our Chamber of Commerce. It's a very vibrant organization, and they just do so many wonderful things. So thank you for a great afternoon there. And that's all I have. Trustee Emery?
Thank you. We have a public safety meeting on Monday night.
Thank you for reminding.
6:00, I think?
By 45.
By 45. And so that's Monday night. And I would like to welcome back our favorite John Zibley, who is the best-looking survivor of a heart attack we've seen in a long time. And the people that he works with are so dedicated to making sure he stays well. They've posted posters and such on how to take care of yourself and what to eat after a heart attack. And if you want to welcome him back, just look for the guy that's eating carrot sticks and apples downstairs. That's him. So welcome back, John. We're very, very glad to have you back. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Trustee Nero?
The only thing I have is, I again want to congratulate the Rotary Club for a great basketball tournament. First time I was there, it was a lot of fun. So good job. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Clevenow?
I'd like to also welcome back John. It's so great to see him down there and see his smiling face when we walk in that door. And I missed him so badly. And I'd also like to give condolences to Senator Dillard's, the passing of his mother. The memorial service was today. I couldn't make it. I was running late, and I was so mad. I drove by after it already started, and it was packed with cars. So I know there's a lot of people who were there to give their condolences. So condolences to him and his family. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Fleming?
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we start, we forgot to announce that the finance ordinance for Monday night is $1,851,862. I'm sorry, $1,800,000, $1,851,862.2. I was reading that with a bunch of numbers.
It was confusing. Thank you. And along those same lines, moving on to the consent agenda, just to make note of the purchase orders, they total $24,568.36, the set of meetings. Anything to be removed and discussed on the consent agenda? Moving on, unfinished business. Motor fuel tax resurfacing project, request for approval of change in plan, number one, final. Board to consider an ordinance approving a request for approval of change in plans, change order number one and final, for the 2012 motor fuel tax resurfacing project, MFT number 12-00103-00-RS.
Thank you. That actually was the full description. The one thing I wanted to point out, and I didn't notice it until tonight, is it's listed under unfinished business, but technically, it's its own item. It is a change order that has to be acted on separately. So I don't know if that matters as far as...
It's fine under unfinished, because it's an amendment to a prior ordinance.
Okay. Well, this was for the general street resurfacing project in multiple locations. Like any construction contract, it is unit price-based. So the actual final contract amount is per the quantities that you measure in place that were actually installed. So after, you know, all the additions and subtractions, the final net difference, we actually do, internally, we do change orders with every single payout as we go along. On your end, to amend the contract amount that you originally awarded, this is one balancing change order in the amount of $47,562.12, which brings the final contract amount to $728,582.12. You've already passed the resolution appropriating the funds. This is just your acknowledgement that the scope of the contract changed. May I ask for that approval on Monday, please?
Any questions? Anyone? Thank you. With the board's approval, we've had a request to move item C, the St. Patrick's Day event and parade for 2013, up to the beginning of the agenda. The petitioner has something he has to get to by a certain time. So is everyone okay with that?
Let's do it.
Okay, then we will have St. Patrick's Day event and parade 2013. Board to consider an ordinance approving the following requests for Holy Trinity's 2013 St. Patrick's Day event and parade. Number one, permit amplified sound in the downtown business district in the Holy Trinity Church South parking lot, Cass Avenue, on Friday, March 15th, 2013, from 4:00 to 10:30, and on Saturday, March 16th, 2013, from 10:00 a.m. to 10:30 p.m. Number two, close a section of Cass Avenue from Trobee to 55th on Saturday, March 16th, from 10:45 a.m. to 12:00 noon, for the first annual St. Patrick's Day parade. And I believe we have Mr. Keith Sellers presenting.
Back here again. We want to throw another party, and we want to include the community in on it. The parade was an idea that was more, not as much for Holy Trinity as much as it's for the community. You know, being a strong part of Holy Trinity now and helping them fundraise for the school, if we could help out the town as well, too. I think this parade is a great way to jump in front of Downers Grove on something. We've checked the dates, and we're not going to mix with Elmhurst or the Chicago South Side Parade. So again, I think it's a good chance to go ahead of Downers Grove or any of the surrounding towns that have, you know, special things going on and build a tradition here of a yearly, annual parade. We're going to be doing a St. Patty's Fest over at the church there, again, like we did with the Oktoberfest, which went over very well. And so we want to, you know, do something else to bring the community in, as well as the parishioners, and get everybody to meet and raise money for the school. Obviously, I've had an architect work out this great map here of, you know, so you guys could understand very well. We got Cass Avenue here. Hopefully, that spelled right.
Shannon, could you just check to make sure he's licensed in Westmont?
He lives in Westmont. I know that. We got the lot across from Uncle Bubbs there is where we planned on doing this. We have sufficient parking, and then there's also parking over on Linden as well, too. We have, we're going to be having bands. We're looking to do a two-day fest. It would actually be Friday evening and then Saturday with kids' activities again, and including different community places to work with us with that, like we did before. With the parade, what we were looking for is Ron Gunther has stepped up, and he's going to run the parade for us.
The parade master. Definitely is.
That's what I hear. So I'm very glad, because I'm not. So I was not looking forward to having to run that and the fest at the same time. So... So, what we were going to ask is if the fees could be waived since this isn't going to be strictly a Holy Trinity event as far as the parade goes. We're going to be working with, trying to invite high school bands in from Downers Grove, Hinsdale, Westmont, wherever we can get, but it also involves the surrounding communities as well, too. So, it's not going to be strictly a Holy Trinity event. The St. Patty's Fest will, but the parade is more for the town itself and just really to get people riled up and, you know, hopefully get people down, see, look at downtown Westmont and get more people out. Maybe we can get special events out there to let them know what's going on over the summer and, you know, get people back.
Great. Keith, you know, I like the idea a lot. The one concern I have, and I want everybody to kind of chime in on this, I'm concerned about the length of the parade. I think from Trobee to 55th, that is really a long, long parade.
Fifty-fifth?
That was my, that was my question is, well, two things. First, I think it's a great idea.
Oh, I love it.
And Ron Gunther has done a lot of parades, or does all our parades, as far as staging. And I think if you do it the way that we typically do the parades from the library, where you can stage them in the library parking lot, and then Ron, you know, gets everybody going and you go from the library and then you'll basically end at Richmond rather than go all the way to 55th because there's so much traffic.
And I apologize. That's, you know what? I didn't read what the whole thing was there. I'm sorry Larry. I've been so busy with trying to get things going, I didn't read. But no, that's, was the original is what we were going to look at was ending it at Holy Trinity, like it usually is. No.
The other thing is, we usually start the parades at 10:45, so the ordinance, I think, they, the police department, what time do you start shutting down Cass? 10 o'clock? Parades that start at 10:45? Because their ordinance asked that it close Cass from 10:45 to noon. If you want the parade to start at 10:45, we got to have the ordinance closing Cass earlier.
And actually, I think the way we are hoping is the parade will start at 11:00 and then the parade, so the closures will begin 15 minutes beforehand, which is about...
Is that enough time? Okay, so if the parade starts at 11:00, then the closures will start at 10:45?
If I could, I also know in one review of plans, and we can talk with Ron, other, I know the option of mirroring the Memorial Day Parade was also talked about doing it on Chicago Avenue east of Cass and a business and then just coming south from Naperville Road and not from Trobee. But that's something we could work out later as well.
Great. Because we can always put it, you know, something to the effect of, because when Ron Gunther stages holidays, it's at the library. When he stages Memorial Day, it's east on Chicago Avenue and everybody kind of mill, so they actually close Chicago Avenue there for staging. So, can we do what we've done in the past, which is give them discretion to do that so they don't have to come before us as to where they're going to start and stage?
So, you want to close Chicago?
To give them the option of what will work best for them.
I also believe that Chief of Police has the authority to open and close roads, well, as, you know, they have to submit for parade permit. If you give me the authority to work with that, as well, too.
That's good.
Good enough.
And then put on for Monday night, the third part of it is for the waiver of the fees?
That's something that was not in the write-up at all. Waiver of fees. There's a lot of fees listed and...
Can you...
I can add that, yeah. I just want to make sure that everybody's okay with that.
So, that it's there for voting purposes is number three.
Right. And Larry, will WSCC be participating or EMA or, you know, how are we going to, will you have volunteers with the traffic as we usually do for these kinds of events?
With the parade, we're working with the police department and they've reviewed the application, but EMA will definitely, you know, be part of that plan. WSCC has offered to assist with the event planning, you know, in many ways.
And if need be, we can use our volunteers that we plan on using for the fest. If they need help, we can always send people down.
It's similar to the Memorial Day Parade. EMA we rely very, very heavily on. We usually have enough to cover and if we can't, we use from officers on the street. We try to do it with the minimum amount of all the time.
Right. Well, it's not very far away, so start getting those entries.
Yeah. And again, I apologize about the parade route. We actually had talked, we were trying to push to do a Westmont Southside Parade, but unfortunately, my county contacts did not get back to me in time today to let us know if we could close 55th. So, this was Larry's alternative if we couldn't get that. So, that's probably why there was the mix-up.
This is good.
But you guys are right, as far as what you said, that's probably the best route.
And trustee Nero plays the bagpipes, so I trust...
He does. I don't know if you were aware of that.
Really?
Right.
Oh, yeah.
Bagpipes.
Really? Too bad he wasn't up for reelection. Probably get it for free, huh?
It'd be worth just seeing him in a kilt. In regards to the fee waivers that Keith has mentioned.
Delayed reaction.
It could be really cold that day.
That's your personal opinion.
Get ugly.
I should clarify something real quick regarding the fee waivers. There are an assortment of fees in there. One is in regards to the parade and the other is in regards to having officer presence duty for security for the alcohol tent. We've never allowed any waiving of fees of the alcohol tent, but I believe your request is in regards to the parade, correct?
Yeah, it's into the parade. Anything that has to do with the fest. And if you could waive fees, that's great, but if we can, I understand. But it was more for the parade because that's going to be more of a community Westmont.
That makes sense. Right.
So...
That's good, for the parade.
And the ordinance requires the officer be there and that they pay the normal hourly rate, I believe. What fees?
Well, we're talking about parade fees.
Parade fees.
Not the festival.
Oh, I thought you were talking with the officer with the alcohol fees. I thought you said...
No waiving of that.
No, no waiving of that.
The officer with alcohol, does that mean we have to provide the alcohol for the officers? A little confused there.
Clarify that. Is he a long-winded? No.
Wow, that was a record.
Yeah, that was fast.
Any other questions about it or anything?
Any questions? Anybody from the public that has a question or a comment?
Start practicing for you.
Okay, great.
All right. Look forward to seeing you in your leprechaun costumes. Especially you, Nero.
Okay, backing up under new business. Downtown development permit, 104 South Cass Avenue. Board to consider an ordinance approving a development permit request for Mean Westmont Groceries, a convenience store with groceries, cigarettes, and tobacco products in the B1 Limited Business District. Do we have a petitioner here this evening? If you would state your name, please.
Hi, good evening. My name is Muhammad Sumani and I was trying to, you know, open a convenience store with the groceries. I was told by the village and the owner of the place that, you know, there's a big need of grocery store around this area and especially, you know, so basically trying to, you know, help the community with opening, you know, convenience store with a copier machine and convenient fax, you know, facility and also and computer setup, you know.
Okay, when you say grocery store, are you talking full-service with, you know, a butcher, a meat market, fresh produce?
The meat market, just basic grocery stuff like, you know, you know, chips and, you know, pop, energy drinks and tissue paper.
So, like gas station type?
Yeah, exactly.
Convenience store.
Convenience setup store, like, you know, the basic need of home needs that, you know, stuff like napkins, tissues, and, you know, soaps and dishwashings, liquids, you know, stuff like that.
And tobacco products?
Tobacco store. Tobacco is like six-by-six, you know, display from Philip Morris Marlboro just goes behind the counter. That's all the space we need for the tobacco, for the cigarettes actually, and, you know, tobacco products like lighters and cigars and stuff like that.
That was the full plan that was provided.
Yeah, that was the full plan that was provided.
I, just speaking for myself, I, you know, it's always good to know when a business wants to come into Westmont, but I have to be honest, speaking again for myself, this is not the type of business that would appeal to me at that location. It's right across the street from a church. It's right next to a bridal shop. It just doesn't appeal to me. We do limit the number of tobacco licenses here in Westmont, so right now, we don't have an open one. I believe they're all taken. So, that would also require a special approval. I'd like to hear, you know, I'd like everybody to weigh in on this and see what they think.
I think it's a, I don't like the location for it. I agree with you. I know trustee Scott's not here and he asked me to convey his concerns and the location was the big thing for him, is right across from Holy Trinity. And, you know, there's just no control over, you know, you're not selling tobacco, but who's to say you can't sell tobacco pipes or whatever you want to call them? And I think close to the school was his biggest concern and I got to agree, I just don't think it's a good spot for it.
And with the comprehensive plan that we are developing, we're trying to get a certain and the Westmont Renaissance Group and WSCC and everybody's working very hard to get a certain look to downtown. I don't think this, this is befitting what we're trying to achieve.
As far as the church and that you guys are talking about, I mean, it actually is more helpful for people to have a convenience store right in front of the church rather than, you know, going far away to buy stuff and stuff like that, you know, with a coffee available, availability coffee machine and everything, you know, pop and people, you know, it's really convenient, there's a lot of houses behind. I've been in the business for more than 10 years and I have seen, you know, most of the residential area I have opened this, I've been doing the business, is basically as far as my experience goes, is really a good spot, but I don't know...
Right, you know...
The village is, why is the village getting too hard on this?
I appreciate your comments. I think that we all do, but as trustee Emory stated, this is not, this really doesn't fit in with the comprehensive plan that we just literally spent two years putting together. This particular business type, in my opinion, and I, from what I'm hearing from the board as well, doesn't really fit the character of that part of Westmont. It's not the type of business that we're looking for.
In which way it doesn't fit means, I'm not able to understand like how you guys are putting this, is not a good spot or the character.
Well, as I said, our tobacco licenses are full. We don't have a tobacco license even available.
Yeah.
For example, it doesn't fit, just like it wouldn't fit on Ogden Avenue in between, in the Westmont Auto Mile, where we have high-end car dealers that have spent literally millions and millions of dollars to develop a look as you drive down Ogden Avenue. We would, if you had sought where one of the storefronts in between those dealers, we would tell you it doesn't fit in with that whole plan there either. So, with what we're trying to do with downtown and to bring businesses in that are retail and that are, are more quaint-looking, a convenience store and a sign, as you said, that says discount cigarettes, even Holy Trinity right across the street, I understand you may think it's convenient, but Holy Trinity, in order to have an upscale look, spent millions and millions of dollars in a redesign of that church. So, when we tell you it doesn't fit in with what we're trying to do with the downtown, it doesn't fit in.
I understand your concern, but somewhere around is, I'm not getting the point, you know, which way it doesn't look good to have a store in, it's been a lot of places that I can, I see a lot of convenience stores right in front of the churches.
But this is our B1 Business District. This is our downtown. We have a specific vision for our downtown and we're, and this is not part of the vision, quite frankly. There may be other parts of town. There might be a strip mall somewhere that has something open that staff could work with you and, you know, you could come and reapply. Of course, there's never any guarantees, particularly since all of the tobacco licenses at this point, we don't even have one available. So, as trustee Emory stated, it just, it's not part of the plan for that area.
I understand. I mean, I'm not trying to push it, but I just want to know, because I knew before coming here that there will be a denial on this, because I just came in to see what comments comes out of you guys. So, thank you very much.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Been seeing you? Any questions?
I think it's been pretty well said. I mean, we have a particular vision in mind, just like a lot of other towns around us have, and we're moving forward with those particular visions going, and it honestly does not fit part of the plan that we have in place.
Sorry to say that whatever the visions you guys are looking at, it is not viewable to all the people, the way people are looking at.
Everyone has their own opinion.
Perhaps, and Shannon, I don't know, maybe you could work with the petitioner to find another location that might be more suitable.
You guys have the vision, but to me or, you know, to other people, it doesn't make no sense at all. I don't know. Maybe it makes sense for you guys.
Certainly, there may be some areas...
I mean, we could maybe look at other locations within the community that would be a better fit.
We still have to contend with the tobacco license question, but there may be some other shopping centers that would be more appropriate.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And then, you know, and then we would talk about...
And the thing that's closest there is the news agency. However, the news agency in selling primarily newspapers and magazines and it also has cigarettes and it also has some convenience foods, not a lot, but primarily newspapers and magazines has been there for, tell me, how many years has that been there?
Oh, forever.
Well, pre-existed you adopting the special downtown business district.
They're forever.
Which you were trying to attract more specialty retail, restaurant, and some mixture services.
But they're like, they're also just like a Westmont's grandfather, you know? It's been there for so long that we wouldn't know what to do without it.
An institution.
So, it's been there, I don't know, 50, 60 years?
Probably.
Probably it came before you guys' vision came up, I guess.
Definitely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Downtown bill development permit and sprinkler waiver for 246 North Cass Avenue, Neat Kitchen and Bar. Board to consider an ordinance approving the following requests from Jason Van Lunte of Neat Kitchen and Bar to operate a full-service restaurant in the downtown B1 Limited Business District. Good evening.
Good evening.
You guys could just state your names for us, even though we know you are.
My name's Jason Van Lunte.
And who you are.
David Casey.
Great. And tonight, we'll be talking about a development permit and a sprinkler waiver.
So, to give you a little experience or little background on us, between the three of us, we're childhood friends, known each other a very long time. We have 53 years' experience in the industry between the... Collectively. Collectively. David has been a union butcher with Casey's Meat Market in Western Springs for over 15 years and Michael and myself both currently own successful businesses, not in Westmont, but in the area. So, basically for the restaurant, we want to do a family neighborhood, you know, bar and grill, you know, very casual, hamburgers and sandwiches. Obviously, all the meats will be cut by hand and sausages and burgers and all that stuff made in-house by our butcher. We'll have a very seasonal menu. We want it to change often, you know, depending on what's, what's in season. Yeah, local, local products as well. We are also very interested in the...
Farmer's market.
Being part of the farmer's market that I know you started last year and utilizing maybe some of their products and ingredients or what the things they have to sell into our menus as well. We also want to be a, you know, a big, big part of the, part of the community, the Westmont Business Community. Yeah, we've already joined the Chamber and attended several events and been trying to get to know the people in the town. We also want to have...
Looking for your booth at Taste of Westmont?
We had a meeting today.
We were there, we had a meeting today about that.
They're on top of it.
Just checking.
We would also like to have a full-service coffee shop in the, in the restaurant available, you know, when we're open, that you can have coffee and we're bringing in a pastry chef friend of mine who, who worked at a very nice restaurant in the city to, you know, so we can also sell little cookies and pastries and things along those lines with the coffees.
Having the parking lot. And with having the large parking lot, we have the side entrance. We can designate a couple of spots so people can come in, get a cup of coffee or a couple of cookies or whatever on their way to the train and...
We would also like to do frozen dinners, you know, for sizes of, you know, for two people or four people, so...
It's been successful at Casey's Market, so...
The, the mother on her way home can, can pick up dinner for four, have it in the oven for an hour and then you're, you're done, so...
Just set up a booth on the train platform?
If you'll let us. We'd be all over that.
We do have that room right there in the train station.
It's a little warming shelter there. A little warming shelter there, you just kick the bums off the.
There's also hopefully, and also, you know, we don't want to be, I know the sports bar thing hasn't gone over well, that is absolutely what we do not want to do. We will not have neon signs or games, jukebox, you know, nothing of that sort. We want to have, you know, closer to what Bakersfield is, not, not quite that high end, and definitely much, much more price conscience with a heavy emphasis on customer service. We would also like to, this, we're hoping this would be the first as well, having the Westmont location be the flagship. I bought a home, my first home in Westmont in '08, right next to Veterans Park, and I'm very happy here and I really like this town, would really like to see it grow and, you know, we're planning on having children very soon, and I just think this is a great town for that, and it's a great, great place to start this endeavor. We are also planning on projecting a million and a half in sales for our first year, which would mean, you know, in excess of about a, over 110,000 in tax revenues for the village. So that's, that's basically it for the restaurant. We want to spend money on the facade of the restaurant so we can really, as you know, it's very easy to miss the place, especially if you're going south on cash.
Not now, because you're all working out there.
Well, good, well, good, I'm glad, glad you're noticing.
Dumpster house.
Yeah, so, yeah, you know, to, to, to help, you know, beautify the downtown area, yeah, give it some more, more curb appeal and clean it up and repaint, reface the brick. We want to redo the fencing out there and all that kind of stuff to just give it a better look.
Which we think is pretty consistent with what you guys think, what you guys' vision for, for the downtown area.
Definitely looks like it.
Yeah, that was, that was really appreciated, even though it, it prints out in black and white, because I'm too cheap to print it on my color printer, but to put all of the various.
I splurged just for this.
To put, well, you guys came in suits and ties, which was.
We want to bring some style to Westmont as well.
I can tell how comfortable you all are.
Very.
But the, to say, you know, just like here's some of the elements we're putting in, really, it helps, you can, you can really envision just by looking at what you're doing with the fixtures.
It's a mood board.
We're working with a designer friend of mine that does, specializes in retail, retail interior design, which, so we're, we want to make it look like it's not three guys who put stuff, decorate it, or in fact, just a bunch of people hanging on the wall.
The three guys in the light fixture. I love the way the front of the building is going to look, the rendering.
Good, thank you.
Where did you get the name?
Six months of brainstorming.
It was, it was Michael's idea. He, he came up with it one night, and then we, we learned after we chose it, we found out neat is an Old English word for the head, head bull in a herd of cattle. So we're going to try and work that thing, we had no idea, our designer told us.
It's also for drinks with no ice in them.
That is true.
So, you know, just.
But also neat outlook and base.
Cleanliness.
Cleanliness and, and good, which is what we want.
Interesting.
Interesting or.
And, and cool.
What we kind of want to be.
You know, you walk in the door and you say, this is neat.
We thought, we thought clean and awesome could be our internal slogan.
Very nice, very nice.
So that, that's pretty much it as far as the, the concept we're going for. I mean, we have a few other pictures for you to take a look at. This is a drawing, a rendering of what we would like to see inside, couches around the fireplace, a very relaxed, comfortable atmosphere. I know, I'm sure a lot of you have been in the space before, you know, it's a very, one big, open room, so we do not want to just jam it full of tables, we want it to have, you know, be spaced out, we're not going to try to cram people in there and seat people on top of each other, we want everybody to have lots of space and, and, you know, be able to just enjoy the space. So that brings us to our request for either a variance or an exception in the code regarding installing sprinklers in the building. We were, we were told, I guess unofficially, but we were told in early December that as long as we were open before June 1st, that we would not have to install sprinklers. So from then on, we, we, you know, hired the architect and, you know, hired, hired a plumber and, you know, started spending a lot of money. These two, these gentlemen, they, they left their jobs, you know, so we could be prepared for this.
I wanted to be involved completely from the start.
Right, and I, I sold my, my shares of my, my current bar, restaurant in Countryside to invest in, in this, and so that, so we had our limited budget to now.
Right, and then a week ago, when we met with some representatives from the village, we were, we were very surprised to hear that that only applies to businesses with 50 seats or less. So that's why we are, you know, coming, coming to the village, and we, we wanted to state a few things, you know, we've, we've been in a lot of the businesses on the downtown strip and kind of been looking at who, who has and doesn't have sprinklers, and we feel since we are a freestanding building, we might qualify a little more for the exemption, whereas if, you know, if we were in a strip mall or a multiple level building or something like that, or sharing walls with other businesses, we would never expect to be exempt from this. It is, it is cement floors, which we will be leaving, we, we removed 2,500 square feet of hardwood flooring that will not be going back in. There was a brand-new roof put on, which is all steel or solid metal roof, and then the walls are all cinder brick, and as you know, the kitchen by, you know, law is, is fire resistant.
We have.
Hold that thought.
Yes.
Chief Weiss, Larry, can we hear the, the fire department's take on this, because that's.
Good evening, everyone, how's everyone today? These gentlemen came into a meeting last week for like a pre-plan discussion. The board, I believe last summer or two years ago, did a moratorium on sprinklers in the B1 district, is that correct?
I think we actually did it twice.
Twice, okay. So there is a moratorium that was put together with the premise that more downtown businesses would come in if the sprinkler system was waived. There are a number of exceptions within that moratorium, one of them being for businesses that had occupancies of 50 or more that wouldn't apply to.
Right.
I don't know where they got the information from, and, you know, that's the danger of taking verbatim stuff without, without moving forward. We talked about it with them, and I made some proposals to Chief Weiss with it, and I also made proposals to the board. The intent of that moratorium was to promote business within the downtown district, and the fire department certainly gets that. The 50 threshold is kind of an arbitrary number because it doesn't relate back to the actual fire code itself. If you guys recall the meeting we have, had about a week ago regarding the theater that was going to open, the threshold for, for sprinkling and assembly use in the code itself is 300 plus. So a 50, a number of 50 is kind of a number, and you can do what you will with it. These gentlemen have said that they don't plan on seating anything more, anything more than 125 within that facility. The square footage basis on that, if you recall from our occupant load discussions the week before, would be more than comfortable. So I think that with the basis of, you know, having a limited occupant load, applying all the other relevant fire codes as far as decorative finishes, which some of your stuff is nice, but it would have to pass those, those, those requirements, automatic fire alarm system.
I was going to ask that question.
Yeah, we'd have to have that. The, the fire department doesn't have really a problem with that, that variance.
What will be the maximum capacity?
The maximum capacity again would be determined through occupant load and the square footage, and if, you know.
So you haven't looked at that?
Well, if we went by the letter of the code, what it would be.
No, I mean, just for this building.
It would be over 1,000, because it's a, you know, what is it, 2,500, 3,000?
6,000.
Yeah, I mean, it's the same thing as the theater over there. We would have a special occupancy load limit just based on this, just like.
Right, but we don't know what that load limit is.
It would be 125.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that.
That's what, that's what was our discussions, right?
Okay.
Yeah, 125, I mean, that's, there's a comfort level there.
Is that with, is that total occupancy, like with staff on premises? Or are you looking at 125 plus 15 or 20?
I mean, you know, we can vary it for staff included.
Yeah, okay, cool. But you will definitely be putting in the smoke heat and the alarms, the pull alarms, it'll go right to the.
Update everything.
Okay.
And we're willing to go above and beyond what is required. We already, yeah, we would already like to install an extra exit. I don't know how familiar you are with this space, it's very hard to service that patio going through the front door when we're going to have so many customers coming in, and you know, the food on the trays, and so, so we would already like to add one exit for that patio, and we would be happy to add any more exits, should.
Exits are good.
Yeah, there used to be one there.
We learned that last week, exits are good.
We'll have alarm systems as well, you know.
Great.
Every day.
Wonderful.
If there's certainly anything else we can do to, you know, appease the, the fire department, we'd be more than happy to, to work with.
I, I honestly think that was one of the biggest questions that we had, and that's why we asked the fire department for their opinion on this, because it weighs in very heavily as it is. I think it'd be a, a very good addition to the downtown.
Oh, yeah.
Look forward to it opening. It's going to be one of the cases that I think probably going forward in the future as far as the sprinkler ordinance goes, that you guys are going to skate under the bar, so to speak.
Yep.
Because there are some things that are going to be coming forward that we're going to have to look at again, but, I mean, even, even with that, I think with the opinions of our fire department or fire marshal, I'm very comfortable with it, so I, I don't have a problem with it at all.
The one, one additional question that I have, because I haven't seen a floor layout, but, and you may not know exactly yet, but since you decided to name it Neat Kitchen and Bar, is there going to be a separate bar where it's going to, you know, want people that are not going to, not interested in eating, so you're going to have X amount of seating or, you know, high tables or whatever in a bar area?
Absolutely, and we're also trying to separate the space, oop, it's, it's kind of hard to see, it's a little small, but we're, we're kind of use these partition walls to kind of create separation between the bar area and the dining room. We will not have TVs in the dining room, we, we were only going to put in, I think, I believe, five TVs as of right now in the bar area, so there will be a, a separate area that will have more of a bar atmosphere, and then the larger part of the, the building will be more of a formal dining room.
Are you looking, do you know like what percent, like of square footage, like say half the place is bar, half restaurant?
I don't know, I would, I would venture to say probably about 20.
Of, of the seating, it's probably, yeah.
About 20%.
Okay. It'll be the existing bar, yes?
We are, we are planning on, I'm moving it a little bit, just, just to make it more, a little bit more functional.
But it'll be the same size, same size?
Same size, yeah.
Okay.
No more stools, just a different, different layouts would fit them.
Yeah, the way it's set up right now, it's, it's, that bar cannot efficiently, efficiently service that restaurant.
We'll be adding a waitress station for the waitress to pick up.
And that, that other little bar?
That's going to be our coffee.
That's where you'll do the coffee?
Coffee slash retail area, that's where you'll come in and pick up your to-go orders or your frozen.
Right.
As much as I hate it, I will also add that if you plan on, because you wouldn't be allowed to, have video gaming, you know, you'll have to figure in your separation of that according to the, according to the statute and all that, but I understand if you need it in there to be competitive, so be it.
Well, at my, at my current location, I believe it's in Countryside, we just, we have, we got machines a couple, a month ago, and we had, we had a couple, started with a couple, we got a couple more, but that's, that's more of a bar over there, but they, they've been doing, they've been doing well. Definitely something that we would explore, but I've already been in contact with some people, the ones that we have in my current location are kind of big and flashy and loud, we'd be looking for.
Doesn't fit with your.
But it does fit with our, our, so if we could find something that would be discreet and not, not noticeable, kind of tucked up in the corner.
Yeah, if it's, if it's even going to happen.
If it did, then we would scratch it off.
I think you were very modest about your, your menu, because looking through it, it's sure a lot more than just sandwiches. Your entrees sound wonderful, it sounds, you know, like fine dining, I think it's going to be very first class.
We don't want to be, we don't want to be a fine dining, we don't want to be a place that you only come once a year.
Your prices are.
We feel price, price point is extremely important. We want people to come back.
They're wonderful.
We don't just want to make $12 on a hamburger once. It doesn't get us anywhere.
Maybe we'll be, we'll be changing and we'll kind of let the clientele dictate what they want, so for certain items that, that they like more, then we'll do more of those.
This, this may be totally, you know, one of those ones, but I got to say, where your building is, and we are very mindful of, it is not our business to decide your business. You take all the risk, you bask in the glory, you take all the loss if something happens. But I do want to throw this out there. Where your building is, and then across the parking lot, then you have, there's a store and they're high-end, but it is kitchen and bathroom fixtures and such, okay, you know?
That's just normal.
Right, okay. We have a business in town that all of us really liked, and it, and I'm not going to say the name of it, but it was a clothing store geared towards teens and young adults, and they really liked the name, and it was very progressive, but everyone thought it was a bakery. So we questioned the name and we said, you know, we just, you know, and they said, no, and they see the stuff in the window, you know, and that didn't quite work out that way. My only fear, and I'm just throwing it out here, and you do whatever you want, I want you to succeed. What I don't want is people who are not as forward-thinking as you to see that you are sharing a parking lot with a kitchen and bathroom fixture and you named Neat Kitchen and Bar, and without the ability, despite how wonderful that building looks, there are people that are going to go by and go, are they selling kitchen and bar stuff there?
I never thought.
I never thought.
Okay.
I think.
And that's the only, so, I'm just going to throw that out because did we not have a problem with the name of a business in town that everyone thought was a bakery?
Yes, we did, we did, and it was a great business, wrong name.
Yes, so, I'm just throwing it out there, and what I think, just make me happy, walk across the street, look at the building as you're working on it, look who you share a parking lot with, and if you think, if you're cool with it, I like it, and I know what it is, and I will be there, I guarantee you, but I don't want you to have the one that goes, is that a kitchen and bar with me? Okay.
That was the hardest part.
I know, so I know, and I can see that it's just, it's throwing like a water balloon on you, but I want you to do it, just, and if you're still fine when you stand across the street and look at it, then.
We could buy some tile from him next door.
Because, because we are very disappointed in a business that didn't do well because they had too much of a progressive name, I'm just throwing it out there and just kind of run it through your thought process at some point.
Our name, our hope is not have our name only on, on the building in Westmont, we're, we definitely want to be a part of the community, we'll be very active at the, at the Westmont Fest, and we want our name multiple, multiple places, so the old design will not be just on the front of the building.
Okay. Well, and, and even on your signage, at some point on the building, you may be able to, you know, state, neat restaurant, neat eatery, neat whatever, whatever you choose to call it.
Neat Kitchen and Bar.
Neat Kitchen and Bar, food.
So I, I had to do it, sorry.
Thank you.
If you look at, if you look at the business cards around the top, you see, you see that the Kitchen and Bar together, it looks much, it does look much nicer, I like, when you just say it, it doesn't look as good, but.
It'll be, I think it'll be.
Put the Kitchen and Bar in there, it looks.
If you haven't already, make sure that, Shannon, make sure we tell them about our grant, our facade grant.
You know about that.
We would definitely want to take advantage of that.
And you, I trust, will be back for a liquor license?
Yes, we, we had this hurdle that, that we were kind of dealing with, so we, we kind of, after last week's meeting, we kind of, we've just put everything on hold before we spent any more money or moved ahead with anything else, certainly with the health department, so they're, they're next.
Because that guy over there, he looks really scary, the one in the.
We like Jim.
He's, he's.
Yeah.
Tried a couple times already.
Yeah.
Thanks for choosing Westmont, guys.
Yeah, this is great, this is really exciting.
And we're very, very happy, and I want to say too, everyone we have dealt with so far has, has been incredibly gracious and welcoming and just nice as can be, and we want to thank everybody for that.
Well, thank you, and thank you for coming in and just getting so involved from day one, joining the chamber and getting involved with WSCC, that's great, and we really appreciate it.
We look forward to doing more with you guys.
And you don't have to wear a suit like Monday if you want to vote.
Thank you, thank you.
You're getting applause, I mean, this is pretty good.
And the people who, at home who are watching this going, all right, already, let's go, it's like, we're just so excited.
Just, just one, just one other word, when you meet with the deputy liquor commissioner, deputy chief, Gunther, you might want to get a tux, just.
It's the bow tie.
Or go to the bow tie. Any other questions from the board? Any questions from any audience members this evening?[1773.12] Any questions from any audience members this evening?
I've never had green chili.
Oh my God, they're wonderful.
It's good.
And, and I mean, I can't believe it.
We don't want to make regular chili because we want to be friends with bishops.
There you go, good idea.
We're not going to try, we're not going to try to compete.
We do have one question from the audience, so if you could come up.
Another question, a compliment, I just wanted to let all of you know that WSCC had a wonderful meeting with these gentlemen this morning and they want to be involved in many of our activities. So they were very receptive to, you know, what we had to offer and we're probably going to put a nice package together for them. They want name recognition, name recognition, name recognition.
Wonderful. The bagpipes?
I was just going to say, you know, you could be in the parade and hand out flyers.
I might hire, what was it, Keith, to finish our architectural drawings? I think he'll be a lot cheaper than the guy we're discussing.
Yes, and a lot better.
Great, well, thank you. And again, thank you so much for choosing Westmont.
Thank you very much.
Looking forward to working with you. Okay, next up, red, white and barbecue 2013. Board to consider an ordinance approving the following requests from the Westmont Lions Club in regard to their red, white and barbecue event. Number one, request to close Plaza Drive from Burr Oak to Blackhawk Drive on Wednesday, May 22nd and reopen on Monday, May 27th. Egress for local business traffic to businesses on Plaza Drive between Burr Oak and Blackhawk will be permitted from the intersection of Plaza and Burr Oak. Number two, request to approve a liquor license fee waiver for the event. Number three, request to approve an amusement license fee waiver for the event. Number four, request to approve a live amplified sound waiver during event hours. I'm surprised you didn't ask us for good weather.
Well, if you can guarantee it. I just wanted to start, you know, by saying, you know, architects' drawings, suit and ties, I don't stand a chance up here. But we are here, the Lions Club, for the seventh annual red, white and barbecue, always a successful event, except that one year where, you know, it rained ungodly. What we're proposing to the board and the village is really no changes from last year at all. It's virtually the exact same thing and if we have the weather, it will be the same thing. Just a quick recap for, you know, from last year, I know I saw most of you out there, but then again, I run around like a nut, you know, trying to keep things in order. We had record crowds, just, it was unbelievable. The weather, cannot ever complain about the weather we had last year, there were times it was too hot.
No.
No, really, it was. As far as our competitions go, we had record competitors, we had 69 professional competitors out there and we had 50 amateur competitors. So as you can see over the, you know, since we first started this thing, I'm going to let Jim talk about that, it's grown and it's grown and it's grown, it's just gotten better and better and better every single year because that's what we do, we make things better. So just real quick, what I've got here is just a real basic layout, if you can see up here, this is the competitors' area, that's in the south. I've got a bigger map, Sue, if you did a bigger.
No, I can see it, thank you.
The competitors' area is in the south overflow parking area where the, at the park, Ty Warner, where the soccer field is. And down here, this is the parking lot that the park district has so graciously approved, just pretty much keeping it the same, we've thrown some little layout changes and this is just very basic right now, some of the layout will change throughout, you know, as we get closer to the event, as I'm sure you're well aware, things do change. But that's all my spiel right now and I'm going to let Lion Jim Addington continue the party.
Thanks, Chris.
I think there's a fifth waiver that has been on in the past in that we hook up to a couple of the fire hydrants for water and I think that has to be allowed. The water department comes out and gives us.
I've never heard that before.
Really?
Don't remember.
Apparently it's just going on?
No, I've never seen it.
If it is, it's fine, I just wanted to mention it just so we're all aware of it because I don't want to get to the event and find out we don't have water.
Okay, no, there was no request for it and we can check to see if it's required.
If you were, just to be sure, you know. But that's the, that was the only thing, as Chris said, Chris and I and Mark Link, you know, came to this village eight years ago with this idea. And seven years ago, we had 26 teams and the village was kind enough, those first couple of years, to help with some of the funding until we got started. And this last year now, as Chris said, we had 69 teams, we set a goal or a minimum because of space limitations and the way we want to do things, of 72 competitive teams and at least again, the same 50 or so amateurs, if not a few more. It has been a successful event, it has now become a profitable, a strongly profitable event. Every year we seem to pick up more sponsors. We were very fortunate last year in the fact that because of the nature of what this is as a barbecue cooking competition, that Standard Market jumped in as our major sponsor. They love the event and they love what we do and of course it promotes them, which is important for all of us. And so they're now, they're now on board. The, the other part of it is that it has, as was said, it has been run without incident. I think we worked very well with the police department and, and with the fire department and everybody else to be sure that, that it is run without incident. It has been a very successful event and historically it has grown and grown and grown and to the point where we're about where we can be and no more, unless we want to find another way of expanding and I really don't think we do. We have tried over the years to grow slowly. For those of us who are there for the entire time and administering this thing and working with the judges and everything else, slow growth sometimes is the best way to do it because you don't get overwhelmed. We've had judges' schools now the last couple of years to get local people from Westmont and the surrounding area to learn how to be judges for this event. We're doing it again at the park district on February 23rd and if anybody would like to get information, they can contact me or go on our website, which is www.westmontbarbecue and get information and if they want to get involved or be a judge and taste some of this unbelievable barbecue that these, that these professional teams put together and I will tell you, it is spectacular food and we enjoy it. The, I think that's really it, as Chris said, we're not asking for any changes, we want this thing to keep going forward and we hope again that the village will support us, as the park district has, and make this again, one of the really premier events. We do believe, two years ago, the event in Shannon, Illinois stopped operating because the organizer out there retired and moved to Florida. We believe now that the red, white and barbecue is the largest competitive cooking event in Illinois. So it's grown to that size where we can say that and that's, that's exciting to be able to tell everybody where we're at.
And just let me add on to that, the last I had heard from KCBS, the Kansas City Barbecue Society, was we are in the top 10 largest in the Midwest.
Wow, that's great.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Cool.
Questions?
Comments, trustees, anybody?
We hope you all will come out and enjoy and have fun with us.
Anybody from the public would like to make?
I will say that the event that they're referencing that no long ago, this was considered one of the most prestigious ones in the nation to kind of put a face on it, so just what you've done to kind of take over, you know, and home that, I mean, there's really kind of a beautiful thing that's not here. I know the little blast, but.
Jay, thank you very much.
And if Mark was here, of course, he would.
Hey, you know, out of all the years this has been going, we've only had one rain out, so that's, that's pretty good. That's pretty good.
Memorial Day weekend, for those of us who have worked with the Memorial Day parades all these years, I guarantee you, there will be rain from time to time.
Yes, we know that.
Just not. On at least one day.
Six feet in 10 minutes.
No.
Okay, thank you, it'll be on for Monday.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, Race to the Flag 5K 2013. Board to consider an ordinance approving the following two requests pertaining to the 2013 Race to the Flag event held in Oakwood subdivision on May 26th. Number one, street closures for the Race to the Flag, I assume we have those on record, and issuance of a license for amplified sound and we have Kathy Casey.
Thank you, sir. Hi, I'm Kathy Casey and I'm representing the Race to the Flag committee. And I just wanted to correct some information on the background. First of all, I just wanted to mention that we actually had 436 participants last year and raised $12,000 that we donated to St. Jude last year. And as far as the particulars for this year, nothing has really changed, the route is the same and registration information is already posted on our website. If you go to www.racetotheflag.org, all of the stats from last year are up and all the new race registration information is already posted, so participants can already start registering.
Great.
And the information that I just distributed, I will go into that in just a minute. I also wanted to just mention that we're starting a new program this year called the Champions Program. And what that is, we had a representative from St. Jude come out last year from Tennessee, which was really an awesome thing for our event. He was so excited about what we were doing and he was amazed at how many participants we had that actually came from out of state and out of our area, which I think really is a great testament to all of the work that the committee has done. But he mentioned what he called was the Heroes Program and what we're doing is kind of a takeoff of that called the Champions Program. And what that does is it, individual participants can actually do individual sponsorships, which will increase contributions and donations that they can raise. And once they reach a certain level, they'll be called a champion and each of those members will get like an armband or something. And so not only will they get a T-shirt, a race T-shirt, but they'll get something that'll highlight them as a champion. And this is something new. He said that one of their other races started this program and so many people were like, what is that, what does that mean? And so many of their participants ended up becoming, they called it their program, the Heroes Program, and so most of their members became heroes. And that's another way to just raise more money through, you know, for the event. So we're going to try that out this year, so I just wanted to mention that.
Good idea.
But one of the things, one of the pieces of information that was mentioned in the background here was about the insurance coverage and I just wanted to explain that a little bit and that is what is also in this memo here. The insurance coverage that we have is actually twofold. We have gotten the certificates of coverage through St. Jude for the property and the spectators and that is a million dollar policy that covers any incidences that would be on the property or if a spectator was injured. All the participants sign a waiver, so basically if anything happened to them, we wouldn't technically have to worry about that. We felt though, as a committee, that we wanted to take out a policy anyway, just in case. And so we did that. I checked with Irma today, our risk management insurance, and he said, we really don't have to. But he said, it would be an added benefit and good PR if you did. So he said, if we want to do that again this year, we can. And I asked him, who should be named as the certificate holder on that policy? And he said, he suggested it would be the committee, the village of Westmont, the park district and the Lions Club, anybody that has any association with the event.
Good.
And so I just wanted to make sure that we were clear on that.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any questions?
Any questions from board members?
No, always.
Yes, thank you for reminding me about that. And we are going to have the pancake breakfast sponsored by the Lions Club again this year. They graciously agreed to do that again this year. And I just wanted to add about that, we really noticed last year that the pancake breakfast after the race really seems to add just a really nice component to our race that other races don't necessarily have. And that was another thing that the representative from St. Jude from Tennessee mentioned, it just gives a nice opportunity for the participants and the spectators to have some time afterwards to.
Instead of just leaving, everybody kind of, you know, they were milling around and talking and sitting, you know, just, it was nice.
Yeah, they have a chance to sit and talk about the race, you know, and just talk about everything and just communicate and, and then that's a little bit of time to relax and kind of chill down and then shortly after that, we have the awards presentation.
Yeah, great. It's a wonderful event. Kathy, the first year you did this, how many participants did you have the very first year?
Do you remember? When we started the 5K?
Yeah.
I would say we probably had around 200.
Okay, so you've more than doubled.
Yeah.
That's wonderful.
Our goal this year is to have over 500, so we'll see what happens.
Great.
Good, thank you.
Sounds great, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, banking services. Board to consider an ordinance selecting a vendor for banking services and approving a contract in accordance with terms and conditions presented in the RFP request for proposal and the bank's proposal. And we have Spencer Parker.
Good evening. As was mentioned, the item before you this evening is the selection of a vendor for banking services and this is something that the board has talked about previously in the administration finance committee meeting, but for the benefit of those who may not have been present and for the public watching at home, I wanted to kind of recap some of the items that were discussed. So we sent notifications of the RFP to 24 different local banks, as well as posted information about it on our website. We had seven banks that were interested and picked up the RFP from us and we had four banks that submitted a proposal. Those were Clarendon Hills Bank, First Midwest Bank, Popular Community Bank and Republic Bank. And then we went through and looked at those different proposals and the different banks and compared them on a number of different criteria and categories. I'll summarize those again. So the first one we looked at was the Bauer Financial Rating and Bauer Financial is an entity that's been rating banks since about 1983 and they ranked them on a series of stars, so one through five stars, with five stars being the best and they recommend banks that are four or five stars. So we looked at those and of the four banks, Clarendon Hills Bank had the highest score with a five out of five star rating. First Midwest Bank came in second with three and a half stars and then both Republic and Popular Bank had three stars. And the rating basically is to look, it looks at financial stability and the ability of the bank to continue going forward. The next item we looked at was location and of the banks, two of them, First Midwest Bank and Popular Community Bank are located in Westmont. Clarendon Hills Bank is outside of Westmont, but it's very close to Westmont. Those three banks were within one and a half miles of the village hall, Republic Bank was about three and a half miles away. The next thing we looked at was community interaction and in the request for proposal, we'd asked the banks to provide a couple of different pieces of information. The first one was their score, their CRA score, their Community Reinvestment Act score and all of the banks received at least satisfactory on that. First Midwest Bank received outstanding and that's basically looking at, you know, the ability of the bank to service the credit needs of all the different aspects of the community and sort of how they've done with that. The second piece we act with, we asked about with regards to community interaction was participation in community events, specifically Westmont community events. And both Clarendon Hills Bank and First Midwest Bank indicated that they, you know, had a high level of participation, the other banks didn't really speak to that at all. We had, both Clarendon Hills Bank and First Midwest Bank did a great job with responding to all the different questions we'd asked in the RFP. There were several places where we asked for some specific information or additional information and things and those two did the best job at answering all of those questions. Republic and Popular Bank answered the majority of them, but Clarendon Hills Bank and First Midwest really stood out for answering all of them and providing all the additional information we had requested. We also had indicated in there, we had a couple of specialty services we wanted to make sure the banks could provide. And of the four banks, both Clarendon Hills and First Midwest kind of did the best of the four in indicating they'd be able to provide those. I think Clarendon Hills stood out a little bit more with being able to provide all the services we were looking for, but First Midwest also did a good job in indicating, you know, their availability to work with us and those kind of things. We also looked at interest rates and earning credits. Basically, earning credit is, they look at your non-interest bearing accounts that takes care of all the fees and then the higher the rate, basically the less money you have to have in that account to cover the fees and you can put it in a higher interest bearing account. account. So with the interest rates and the earning credits, Claretton Hills Bank ranked second to the highest in both categories. Republic Bank had the highest interest rate, and Popular Bank had the highest earnings rate. I did want to mention with regards to the interest-bearing account, that, you know, I was asked to kind of specify and differentiate between a couple of different types of interest-bearing accounts. There's the money market account, which has some restrictions on it, you know, you can only write a certain number of checks and can only do a certain number of transactions each month, and then there are other accounts, like NOW accounts, where you've got a little bit more access to them. And while First Midwest Bank did have a lower interest earnings than the others, they, this was a NOW account, which did not have those same level of restrictions. I've also spoken with Claretton Hills Bank, and they indicated that their account also has none of those restrictions as well. There's no limit to the transfer or the number of checks that you can write from it. But I wanted to mention that, that was something that was not discussed in detail at the Administration Finance Committee meeting, and I just wanted to point that out. We also looked at the fees for the different services, and again, those are generally covered by the earnings credit within the account, but they're still important because if there's additional services that we hadn't anticipated, you know, and the ability to keep the amount in that account low so we can earn interest on more money, earn interest on a larger dollar amount or earn interest on the higher account, so fees are important. The lowest, Claretton Hills Bank was the lowest on all of the different fees. The other banks kind of varied back and forth, some were lower on one and some were higher on the others, but Claretton Hills Bank definitely stood above them in each of the different fees that we looked at. Another item I wanted to mention that we didn't really discuss at the Administration Finance Committee meeting is the term of the pricing schedules. What we had requested in the request for proposal was that they provide us with a fee schedule that they could, you know, live with for a year and that we could kind of have it guaranteed for a year, and I believe that's what the majority of the banks did. First Midwest Bank, however, indicated that their pricing schedule and their fee schedule and earnings schedule, they'd be willing to set up as a five-year fixed program, so guarantee that we, you know, our fees wouldn't exceed these amounts and that the earnings would be at least those amounts for five years. So their interest rates were a little bit lower and their fees were a little higher, but it was more of a guarantee and less fluctuation there. With regards to incentives, we asked the banks to indicate, you know, some different incentives they may provide. Claretton Hills Bank was able to provide the most incentives. First Midwest Bank kind of came in second. And I also wanted to indicate, at the Administration Finance Committee, I passed out a sheet of paper where, you know, under the other category under incentives, it listed a lockbox, and I apologize for, under Claretton Hills Bank, and I apologize for the confusion there. All of the banks do provide a lockbox service, if the village were interested in that. That's something that they all provide. Claretton Hills Bank had specified that they were willing to provide a safe deposit box, and I apologize for putting the wrong term on there and perhaps misleading the board. I apologize for that. I don't know that it's a significant difference or significant change. It's still an additional incentive that's offered by one bank. It's a different term, but just to clarify, they all do offer that, that service. So kind of in summary, with regards to Bauer rating and community events and location, I think both Claretton Hills Bank and First Midwest Bank kind of stood out a little bit from the other banks that submitted. With regards to interest and fees, I think Claretton Hills Bank definitely had the higher interest rates and the lower fees. First Midwest Bank were a little bit, not quite as good as Claretton Hills Bank, but they were willing to guarantee them for a longer period of time. With regards to location, First Midwest Bank is located in Westmont, and whereas Claretton Hills Bank is not, it's located in Claretton Hills. But with regards to distance, they're roughly the same. They're both under one and a half miles away, and Claretton Hills Bank, while it's not located in Westmont, has certainly had a history of participating a lot in Westmont-specific events and definitely involved with the Westmont Chamber of Commerce, even though they're outside of the official corporate boundaries of Westmont. And then the other thing that I wanted to mention about was the Bauer rating, and so that's, I think it's very important, especially, you know, in these times where we're looking at banks and looking at, you know, there's an independent agency rating banks on their financial stability, and I think that's an important thing that we have to consider. Because of that rating and the, as well as the interest and fees and their ability to provide the services, my first recommendation would be for Claretton Hills Bank. That would be my recommendation to go with them. I think First Midwest is also a good choice. I think, you know, there's a lot of good things to recommend them, and I definitely think that there's potential for future work and future business with both these banks as well as others that submitted the proposal. As you're aware, Claretton Hills Banks was one of the ones we were strongly considering at the last time we went out for banking services, and so there's certainly an opportunity for future business with different banks, but at this time, I think my recommendation would lean towards Claretton Hills Bank, but I'm certainly up for other discussion or questions or, you know, obviously, it's up to you as a board to make the decision, but that would be my recommendation at this time.
I value your opinion.
That's why it's up to us to rely on your opinion.
That's why we have you. [laughing].
Okay. Any other?
I trust your judgment, and if that's your final decision, then I support that. Comments, anybody?
No.
Okay. Claretton Hills Bank, it will be.
Thank you very much.
Thank you to everyone that did return the RFP.
Absolutely. It was a great response.
Congratulations to Claretton Hills Bank.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. DCEO grant administrative signature approval. Board to consider an ordinance to authorize the village manager to sign any documents related to the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity Grant Project HR 120 325. Ron.
Earlier this year, you saw a similar grant survey for funding for an emergency siren. This is part of the legislators' funding initiatives that they have each year. Both Representative Bellock and Senator Dillard have done great jobs trying to acquire funds for the village. This particular funding survey has to do with some security improvements to our buildings, and we were asking for the board's permission to be able to execute this agreement and return it to the state and take advantage of this particular project that Representative Bellock worked very hard on for us.
Good.
Sounds good.
It's good, yeah.
Okay. Next up, review of Class 16 liquor license. Board to review the liquor license classification permitting the practice of a customer bringing their own bottle of alcohol, specifically wine, into a licensed premise.
Hello. This is for discussion purposes only, and currently, we have one BYOB license, which is owned by Bakersfield Restaurant. Talking to their management, it's very successful. They do not charge the corkage fee. It's used purely as a service for their customers, and they've gotten good reviews from it. We do have an additional applicant that's coming up, which would be Safran, once they move to their new location. They're going away from all liquor, going to a beer and wine only, plus a BYOB license, so.
Nice.
That should be on the next agenda, if all of this is planned.
Great.
So one suggestion, we really haven't had any issues with the BYOB, so if the board chooses to continue the review, we suggest that we do it annually rather than every six months.
Right.
Yeah, that's good. Everybody okay with that, once a year?
Yeah, because we, it's not like we have a lot of people coming in asking for BYOB.
Requesting it.
I mean, if we had even like half a dozen sitting out there, I'd want to keep it at six months.
Right.
You did a similar thing with the automated light project. You're doing that every six months, and as you just stated, this has been even less active, so.
Oh, and we rely on recommendations. That's why we will rely on.
That was on the heels of Spencer Parker.
Yes. Who is quite eloquent in his presentations.
That's great, thank you. Stray animal agreement with VCA Arboretum View Animal Hospital. Board to consider an ordinance approving a stray animal agreement with VCA Arboretum View Animal Hospital in Downers Grove for the treatment of injured stray domestic animals.
My recommendation is we go with VCA Arboretum View Animal Hospital.
Is that who we used last year?
No, we used to use Downers Grove Animal Hospital on Ogden Avenue.
Oh, okay.
We currently use Hinsdale Humane Society for our strays, however, they will not take any medically challenged animals. So we have an agreement with West Suburban Animal Hospital in Westmont that will handle any injured animals during their normal business hours. We're in need for a new business, a different business for after their hours. We previously used to use Arboretum View. We stopped for a while, and now we want to go back to them, and we will no longer be using Downers Grove Animal Hospital.
Competitive pricing?
The Arboretum View is a little better.
Okay.
And just a better overall.
Yep.
Yep.
I've got like 30 vets on staff and they're.
Can't beat that.
It's a big operation there.
Huge.
It's top-notch.
They have specialists in everything, and if we have a poor little stray that needs a specialist, they're there.
And to be clear, we're still going to go with the Humane, the order of business here is Humane Society first, animals not injured. Injured, West Suburban, business hours, if not Arboretum View is a very last resort.
Perfect. Okay, sounds good. And we have nothing under miscellaneous with that. I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of personnel and the purpose to fill a vacancy of public, I'm sorry, to fill a public office vacancy.
Motion to, some who? Emery.
Second.
I don't know whether I was going to prove it or what.
Roll call.
I'm second.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Steve.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Clevino.
Yes.
Trustee Sinica.
Yes.
Trustee, I'm losing my place. Fleming?
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Trustee Hero.
Thank you, God.